Oh, yes, it is. Okay, good. Long for the land trust. Do you have some news?
That's funny, I always have extra friends and I'm from that.
What do you have?
Third to seven meetings in December of so forth.
Oh, I see. The most part? Okay, it's five o'clock. Thank you all for coming. We'll call the regular meeting of the Carefree Town Council to order. Ms. Contravus, please take a silent roll call. We're all in attendance. And Pledge of Allegiance, Sharon Smith, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Item number one, approval of the December 6, 2022 Town Council Regular Meeting Minutes. Item two, approval of the December 13, 2022 Town Council Special Meeting Minutes. Item three, acceptance into the public record of the December 2022 Paid Bills. And item number four, acceptance of the cash receipts and disbursements report for October 2022. Any comments? So I would accept a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passage unanimously. Thank you. Next up is Call to the Public. So at Call to the Public, those wishing to address the council can fill out a chip, a little form like this, and come up and speak. The public may address us on matters not on the agenda. And at the conclusion of open call to the public, individual members of the council may respond to criticisms. The council may not discuss items on or take legal actions on any issues or items not on the agenda, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, no more than three minutes. So we have one call to the public form from Ms. Deborah Morrow. So please come forward and state your name and address. Thank you.
Deborah Morrow, 37081 North Bloody Basin. I want to thank the council for the speed bumps that were recently placed on Bloody Basin Road. They have been amazing, now that they're completely across the road. There are seven houses on that little stretch of street, and in August, we put out a game camera. It didn't work at nighttime, but it was good for the day. And over 400 vehicles were going on that little stretch between the two roundabouts every day, during the day. Usually, there was about five to seven of the 7,000 and up trucks also going on that road. So now, we're gone from 400 down to nine an hour, which should be about 60 or 70, and it's so much better. The rocks and the roundabout aren't thrown all over. The speeding in between the roundabouts is still a little bit, but not too bad. And the teenager with the really bad muffler goes around the other way. So we're happy. And he's happy that I even slowed down a little bit, too. So we just want to thank you for them. They have been amazing. And hopefully, everybody will go through the commercial side now. Thank you again.
Okay. Well, thank you for speaking. So that closes Call to the Public. And just one comment. It would be interesting to see after the holidays, how, what those numbers settle in at. Good. Well, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next up on the agenda is Current Events, item number six. So does council have any current events to share?
Actually, I do. The Carefree Desert Garden Series returns, and that will be next Saturday, the 14th. As you know, it's been a very popular event through the years, and there will be, this is the first of four such programs this year. Next week, it will be the gardening educator, her name is Carol Studdard. Ms. Studdard is an adjunct professor at Mason Community College, and she's done work through the Desert Botanical Garden as well, where she is a horticultural instructor. She will be discussing the vital role that insects play in our local ecology. She'll introduce the, those in attendance to the wonderful and fascinating world of insects and help all to discover who are gardens allies and who the enemies are. Program includes a plant raffle. It will begin at 9:30. It will be on Saturday, January 14th, until approximately noon in the Desert Gardens Pavilion located in the town center. There is a donation that people can donate. It's requested a courtesy donation of $5 or more in order to continue to support these programs. Obviously, it's optional, but it's been a great program in the past, and we're kicking it off here in January. And those have typically, and John, you've, Mayor, you've managed these in the past, that it's a capacity audience many times, so it should be a lot of fun and more information on our town website, but that will be for Saturday, January the 14th.
Any other current events from council? I have a couple. One, so since our last meeting, we've installed cameras so we can video record the meetings. So a long time coming, and if it works right, it'll be recorded, and we'll post it later this week on the town website, on our YouTube station. And then, hopefully, at the February 7 Town Council meeting, we will be able to livestream that meeting. So it's a step in the right direction. It's a good thing. So for those who don't wish to attend the meeting, they can watch it from home or watch it later.
So we can watch from home, too?
Second item. At the February 7 Council meeting, we will appoint Planning and Zoning Commissioners. And so we're accepting applicants to step forward between now and, the closing date is the 13th of January. So if anyone is interested, please write, submit a letter of intent, resume, tell us about yourself, and then on the, on February 7, the council will convene and we'll pick seven council, or sorry, seven Planning and Zoning Commissioners to serve for the next couple of years. And the other item is Thunderbirds Artists will be back in town, January 20 through 22nd. Okay.
John, is there a form for an individual to fill out to submit the?
No, you just, just send an email to Stacy.
I felt for Candace.
Yeah, yeah, or Candace.
Got it.
Okay. Item number seven, it's a public hearing. It's a review and discussion regarding amendment to the Carefree Arizona Code of Ordinances related to the repeal and replacement of Article 6, offenses, chapters 6 to 8, short-term rentals, responsible party requirements, and other violations to align with the recently passed state legislation. So we had the first hearing for this on December 3, and we've had, we had a lot of input at that meeting, and we've had some input since. So it's taking some time to pull that all together, and staff is working on that, but they're not ready to do it this evening. We want to make sure we, when it comes before the council at the next meeting on February 7, that it's a sound ordinance. We can discuss it some more, we can tweak it some, but we want to make sure it's on the right track and it's as right as possible. So what I'd like the council to do tonight is, we'll have a vote to defer it until the February 7 Council meeting. Any comments?
No, I agree.
Okay. So we entertain a motion?
Motion to defer till next council meeting.
Great, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passage unanimously. Okay, thank you. Item number eight, public hearing, review and discussion to approve the Village Center Redevelopment Plan. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Prokopak.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Just wanted to, Steve Prokopak, Economic Development Director, and just wanted to tee this up. We're going to have Michael Baker International. Matt Klaesikow is going to be doing the primary presentation. But this is kind of the midterm of a process, but the end of the administrative process for creating a redevelopment area. Back in March of 2021, I got together with the council, and we talked about, after an assessment, looking over the 2015 Master Plan, that really did, to allow for some of the things that were in the plan that would help us with revitalization, what we can do and options for the future town, or for the town hall site, as we look to potentially redevelop that site, and as well as how we can participate in public-private partnerships. It really was, we were really limited by the tools that we had, that most communities typically have through a redevelopment area. And those redevelopment areas are generally for areas that have a need, like our town center, you know, whether it's just through time, they've been developed over various different timeframes, but it's obvious that, you know, while we have a great area, it does need a little bit of help. And part of what the redevelopment plan or area does is allows us to address the specific buildings, along with building owners, and create those kinds of partnerships to help, you know, foster that type of revitalization that we'd like to see. And so we went ahead, and as a council, we presented to you, and you approved the redevelopment area, and that redevelopment area was approved on the, in August of 2021. That's the first part of the administrative process. The second part, before any of the tools through the redevelopment law can be enacted, is we have to have a redevelopment plan. And to do that, instead of trying to recreate the wheel, we already had the 2015 Village Center Master Plan. And so we talked about, like, what's the best approach? And the best approach really was to take the existing plan and ensure that we can take that plan and put the pieces that would allow us to have a redevelopment plan, and those are outlined within the state statute that need to be included in that. At the same time, we had the opportunity to update it with things that have occurred, for instance, like the hotel site was listed as a key anchor site for, in the 15 plan, and we updated it with that. And then we also had the opportunity to talk to the public, stakeholders, property owners, businesses throughout the community, and said, are there other things that we can be doing over the last seven years that we haven't done, or that need to be addressed in this particular plan? And so we did address some of those specific things, too, but we didn't really change the vision, we didn't change the goals, we didn't change a lot of the implementation steps. It was really more just kind of doing some fine tweaking, and Matt will kind of get more into that when he does his presentation. And so to go through that process, we decided that the best way to do that would be through a series of public workshops that we did with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so we started that process off, you know, after, and I think it was just roughly about a year ago when we hired Michael Baker International, and we looked at, started editing the document, and that went through a series of edits through the Planning and Zoning Commission until it was finally recommended to council in the December meeting for approval by council. And I would say that we went through a pretty robust editing process, and I really thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for all the hard work that they put into editing that particular document. One of the other things that we did also was we updated the economic analysis, not a full-blown update, but really just kind of comparing seven years ago to today to see if anything really changed drastically. Nothing really changed drastically over the last seven years, but it allowed us at least to update it, get it addressed, and look at how we're going to measure that against the future. And when we start looking at the total public engagement and stakeholder engagement, you can see up on the screen, you know, it was pretty robust. And we additionally held neighborhood meetings, specifically with a lot of the adjacent neighborhoods here. We reached out to the various different HOA groups, and we hosted those meetings here, and then we also had public workshops that, I think we had about 70 to 80 people attend. We talked about that also in context with some of the other things that we're working on, which include the circulation of parking as well as the signage package. And those two things that we're working on that are, those other two plans, the circulation and signage plan, or circulation of parking and the signage plan, are actually implementation steps as part of the Village Center Plan. So we're updating a plan that we're currently also implementing, so it's a very, very dynamic situation. And so one of the things we did is we kind of separated these things out a little bit to give them some space, because I think the public was having a hard time understanding what was what. And so really, what we're doing tonight is just approving the edits to this document to allow us to have access to, and finish, or to access to the state tools that will be through a redevelopment plan. Again, we're not really changing anything drastically from that plan, but that is the ask for tonight, and I'll let Matt walk through the process.
Great. Well, thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mayor and council. It's good to be before you this evening to talk about our work on preparing this redevelopment plan. As, as many planning processes, processes, I should say, start, I think it's beneficial to take a moment to understand where we've been, to then recognize how we're moving forward. So what I wanted to pause on for this first slide is show the organization of the current Village Center Master Plan. So when this master plan was prepared back in 2015, we went through a very robust public outreach effort and got really great feedback from the community to arrive at this plan. And this plan was award-winning, and it was organized in this fashion. So we have the introduction that obviously states the project purpose. We get into a robust description of existing conditions or what was carefree today at that point in time. And with that foundation, we then were able to establish the vision, right, of what are we trying to accomplish in the Village Center? And that vision was crafted through public dialogue and engagement. And so that vision then was carried forward by the Master Plan for Action. And that's the robust portion of the Master Plan, which detailed the individual actions and efforts that could be accomplished to achieve that overall vision. And then with those actions, we then provided the implementation guide. It's not enough to just simply say, here's all the things we could do, good luck. The implementation guide actually outlines what is the sequence of how we should go about looking at these efforts, and what is the work that's ingrained in that? And who are the players that could assist with that effort? And so that's the outline of the current Master Plan. And as Steve outlined, there was some limitations with that Master Plan. And, and those limitations really exist within state law, which is prohibitive in terms of using public funds for private use, as well as how proper, public property is disposed of in a city or town. And so there's challenges that the Master Plan by itself couldn't accomplish, or couldn't do it in the most efficient way, that maybe other communities have certain tools available to them. And those tools become available through this redevelopment plan that Steve was conveying. So on this slide, it just emphasizes why we're going through this process. It's to address those issues and those limitations of how a city or town can manage their property and utilize the redevelopment plan to, one, have an ability for municipalities to have greater control over the disposition of real estate; two, the ability to enter into public-private partnerships; and three, we have some advanced, some enhanced, I should say, rules for bonding and financing; and then finally, four, access to more federal grants and loans. So all of those four things were, were the trigger to create or identify the benefit of going through this redevelopment plan process. So now you might be asking yourself, okay, we understand the nuances between the two. Where do we go from here? And this slide really outlines how we accomplish that transition from going from a Master Plan to a redevelopment Plan. So what you see on the left is the Arizona Revised Statute and the requirements that must be included in a redevelopment Plan, or what a plan must include in order to be viewed as a redevelopment Plan. So for time and brevity, I won't walk or read 1 through 7, but if you look to the right side of the screen, this is the organization, as I mentioned, of the current Master Plan. But you can see by the parentheses there how each chapter was revised or updated to meet the requirements on the left-hand side. So the introduction obviously aligns with requirement 1, chapter 2, the existing conditions aligns with requirement 2, and so on and so forth. And so it's, as Steve outlined, this was very much a surgical approach to updating this plan. It was not to throw away all the work that was done with the community back in 2015. It was to recognize what has been accomplished since then, and then refine that with the benefit of current conditions as they exist today. So what that means, as we go through chapter by chapter, is, is selected edits that focused on bringing this plan, again, current with state statute requirements. So the introduction didn't really require a lot of update. We simply got into the introduction, revised the plan purpose to obviously speak more to a redevelopment plan than a Master Plan, and then we outlined the planning process in a little bit more detail, because now we're, we're conducting this redevelopment effort. We also made an important addition to summarize the outreach efforts that Steve outlined in his opening comments. So we wanted to capture both the previous work that was done from a public outreach standpoint, and also recognize the more recent efforts that were conducted to inform the edits that were placed within this plan. So Carefree Today is the chapter where we're really looking at existing conditions. This chapter helps inform some of our recommendations. And so really, this revisions to this section really consisted of making any updates of changes that happened since 2015 to today. So we updated either census data, if that was being referenced, if a parcel had changed its zoning, we updated that in the document. Any of those little condition, property ownership, those types of things were relooked at to see if anything had changed, to understand if players or participants are new to the process, and make sure we're engaging them. That then set the scene for us to look at Chapter 3, which was the vision. And so this is the chapter that actually outlines what is the plan. And so this has the Master Plan within it, as you can see on the screen there. So within that Master Plan, you can see that we've captured now the hotel and the residential aspects that have, are infill pieces. And then we reprogrammed based off the feedback we were collecting through our existing conditions update, how the original Master Plan might be reworked. And so you can see that we added Mariachi Plaza to the north portion of the study area. That was not part of the original Master Plan. And then we went through and looked at some of the vacant parcels in the study area, as well as the existing buildings, to understand, as you can see from the legend, of what would be an existing building, what buildings might see revitalization or adaptive reuse, i.e., they wouldn't be torn down, they would be reused, or redevelopment or infill in the darker red. So that would identify properties that might see more robust redevelopment or infill conditions. And so along with those revisions to the plan itself, we then created the table that you see on the screen, which is a result of the redevelopment plan requirements, to specifically identify the ownership of the parcel, the current development type and use, as well as the potential use. And so this really starts to outline the vision and overall work effort that the following chapter carries forward. So with the benefit of the Master Plan, we then get into the most robust part of the document, which is outlining the steps or actions that can be conducted to achieve that vision Master Plan. So within this Plan for Action, we've identified objectives that focus on achieving the defined vision. We then, within each objective, have a series of strategic initiatives, and those would be specific efforts or outcomes that the town should be working towards in order to achieve that objective, right? So an objective, you might look at more as a goal, and then the individual strategic initiatives are incremental considerations that should be recognized in order to achieve that goal. And then the action steps are the specific efforts that would be done to achieve that. So a goal might be, we want to make this Village Center more pedestrian-friendly, for example. That might be the overarching goal. The strategic initiative would be to make, make available more sidewalks to facilitate that access, and then an action step might be to submit for a grant to help pay for those additional sidewalks. So you can kind of see the sequencing there of how we looked at and how detailed we were in terms of why and how we're achieving the objectives to reach that vision. It was discussed through the Planning, Planning and Zoning Commission that that was great, but there seemed to be a scale between all the different action types, that some actions were in-kind, that they were just efforts that staff or others would support, while others would require monetary or outlay of funds. And so we then worked with the commission to identify this new distinction for the action efforts that identify what would be a potential project, something that actually would have funding, what would actually be a regulatory update, so it would update a code or require a change in a policy that the town currently adheres to, what would be in-kind support, just effort from staff or stakeholders? And then what would be a catalyst project, something that would, would drive the project forward? And so those categories were identified and then utilized to further emphasize how and what type of projects, how those projects would fall within those categories. With the benefit of understanding those projects and categories, we then updated the implementation chapter. And that chapter includes that implementation matrix, which is a portion of the image there on the right. And that matrix, as I outlined, identifies the objective, the strategic initiative, and then starts to specify what would be the lead entity to drive that forward. So in some instances, it is the town, and in others, it's not. It might be a stakeholder that would be more appropriate or in a better place to initiate a specific action. And then we identify what is the order of magnitude associated with that in terms of cost, and the timeframe of when that should be conducted. Should it be done in the near term, midterm, or long term? And so with the, with the combined efforts of all of that, we feel that this does meet state statute requirements for a redevelopment plan, but we also didn't want to lose some of the benefits of the work that was done back in 2015. So you can see that the appendix keeps some of the previous work efforts, so that we have that transparency and ability for residents or anyone working to assist on this planning effort to understand the sequence and how we arrived at some of the recommendations that are captured within the plan. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, to see if there's any questions.
Okay, great. Well, good job. And thanks to Planning and Zoning and staff, and to Michael Baker International, and the public who came to the meetings. I know you had a lot of meetings. So well done.
Yes. Yes.
So I have a few questions before I go. Council, do you have questions and comments?
I just have one comment. The way I look at this is that it's really a guide to our forward progress, whether we like progress, we can't stop it. And I think a lot of the groundwork that was done with the surveys in 2015 has given us a really good foundation, and a lot of the legwork by Stephen getting to know the community when he was here. And the way I look at it at this point is that there's a lot of discussions going forward with community involvement, and I think that's a good thing, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback. That's a great point that we wanted to end on, so I thought it was a good time to pull up those next steps, is to emphasize that the conversation doesn't stop tonight, that this plan is a recommendation of steps, but how and the manner in which those are accomplished does continue on from tonight. And Steve will be assisting with that process and how the town evaluates that as his economic development plan is solidified, and then how that plays into the specific programming of all the recommendations. So I completely agree with your observation.
I have a question. Nice work on it. On this page here, the items are identified in purple for revitalization or adaptive reuse opportunity. Yeah, there you go. What, I mean, I'm going through this, and what criteria was used for the selection of these, looks like five properties?
Yes. As far as looking at making distinctions from revitalization or adaptive reuse to redevelopment or infill, a lot of that really, as you can imagine, first comes down with talking with the property owners and understanding how engaged they are within the community or how available they are. So that was certainly one aspect of it. The other aspect was looking at the market analysis that was originally done, and then we had the same consultant update that analysis to see if or what certain types of properties were consistent with the, consistent with the development needs of today compared to when those properties were originally developed. So, you know, some of the footprints of our spaces in the village center might not necessarily meet ceiling height or layout that certain types of users are looking for today. So we're trying to evaluate the engagement of the property owner or the status of businesses within the building, but we're also looking at the status of the building itself to understand where or how appropriate it is to revitalize or redevelop. And then infill is naturally any of those pieces that aren't developed today.
So for example, the item B at the very top, the gas station, what it looks like to me, is something that you're looking into potentially revitalize?
That's correct. We...
Versus getting rid of the gas station, not...
Right. Now, we, for the gas station, there are specific conditions that, you know, are not completely within our control, but we've also recognized that that is a gateway into the village center and a key piece, especially with the property just behind it. And so that particular piece was one that had a lot of conversation as to whether it would be most conducive to revitalization or redevelopment. And so right now, we're kind of looking at that revitalization aspect, but that doesn't necessarily restrict this plan from, if at some point in time in the future a redevelopment opportunity presents itself, this plan has the flexibility to look at other options for that particular piece.
Matt, one of the things, I think that there's some discrepancy between the table and the map.
Right. There, as far as the table and the map, it was recognized this morning that the color, if you look at B for the gas station, it's identified as purple for revitalization, but on the chart, it's actually identified for redevelopment. So the map is, will be updated to be consistent with the table.
I was just curious what criteria you used, because they're very different nature.
Right.
You know, you have this town hall, and then you've got the gas station, and some other property here, number five, not sure what that is, but just what it was, what you were looking for in order to put into that category for revitalization.
Yeah, and Steve, with the benefit of talking with the property owners, can...
Yeah, I think, Councilmember Hatcher, you know, part of that is, it's part of a conversation with property owners, but it's also looking at the long-term viability or obsolescence of any particular building. And I think one of the things where you saw probably a bigger change was we were looking at the post office building and the idea of potentially, in the original planning process, of that being more of like a redevelopment opportunity. But after having communications, you know, with stakeholders, including the community, the property owner, and businesses that are actually in there, including the post office being a long-term tenant, that really, the reality of redeveloping that site anytime in the next decade is probably pretty slim to none. So, and it's really, you know, why I think there's, people can agree that there's things we can do to improve the aesthetics of the building and improve the usability of it, that there's still life left in that building. And so that's kind of how that evaluation process went, went, along with talking with the various different property owners. And, you know, and then particularly like with the town hall site, you know, obviously, you know, the, not to say that that building doesn't have life left in it, but the little 3,800 square foot building next to the sun dial just has higher and better use, and I think most people agreed with that. And so that gets slated more for redevelopment. And the gas station is one of those ones, and in particular, at least stuff behind the gas, behind the gas station, obviously, would be looking for something like a redevelopment. You know, those buildings aren't even occupiable anymore.
It's kind of a mess back there.
Yep. So, and then we'll be looking at focusing some, putting parking in that, I think is going to be the priority for that particular location there.
All right. Thank you.
So which is, which takes, which is correct, the map or the table?
The table is correct, yeah. So one of the things we'll need to do as part of the approval is that we'll need to update that table, or the map to reflect the table.
Yeah, B should be like redevelopment or infill, is that...
Yeah, and so the reason, and the reason that we had the discrepancies is because when we were talking with the public, we wanted the public to be able to see the difference of what was in the actual original plan versus what was being recommended as part of the table, and so that just didn't get transferred over when we did this.
Thank you.
Steve, what do we do if we identify a property for redevelopment or revitalization, and we find the property owner is just unwilling to work with the town, recall Sir Trent after a number of attempts?
Um, you know, I mean, this, we just got to continue to work with the property owner. I mean, I think that's the goal of our program here. You know, it's unfortunate, and the ways that we can work with them, is if there's ways to incentivize the project, we can work with the property owners to even put it up for an RFP, where, you know, they can come in and we can define like what the highest and best use would be, and maybe that would help them maximize the value out of that particular property, if it's something they're willing to do to sell the property. But that's, you know, what we're gonna, it's a, it's not easy on the redevelopment side, even on the reuse and/or adaptive reuse and revitalization, it's not that easy as well. You know, you have some long-term property owners in this town, but I think they'd be eager to work with us. And I think when we've put a step forward that we're, you know, we're willing to help, and when we talk about public-private partnerships, you know, that is the idea that government's going to provide public assistance or some kind of financial or some kind of benefit to these property owners, but that also always has to leverage something back. There has to be some kind of private investment that we get back, either twofold or threefold, in addition to anything, other additional revenues that the town would get back from doing that type of project, as well as looking at public safety issues. You know, some of these buildings need to be our public safety problems, because they just were built in a time when those codes didn't exist. So those are the things that we'll be looking to do, and, you know, one of the things, just get our buildings at a level playing field. And I think most property owners would like to be able to charge a carefree rent for their buildings versus, you know, a non-carefree rent. And you can see the ones that are successful, and particularly a lot of them are the buildings that were built later. And, you know, we have some of the buildings that were built early on, especially those built to zero lot line standards. You can see who those are, there's five of them. And so we'll be, you know, really looking at to help foster that along. So that's how, I know it's a long answer, but that's the way we're going to approach it.
Yeah, I mean, this, just going to comment, one of the drawbacks, the stumbling blocks in these developments for each of these property owners is getting updated to the fire codes and other electrical codes, et cetera. And if we do a public-private enterprise together, perhaps that's the portion that we could cover, that would give them the, probably the, you know, incentive to move forward and do the rest of the work.
And that's definitely one way to approach it. And so when you look at a building like Los Portales, which was built a long time ago, you know, it has a lot of those types of issues that you'd want to address. And so, but if we can get economic viability back out of that building, some public offset that helps really increase the private investment back into that building, and we get tenancy back in there, then it, then it seems to make sense, and it creates a safer space for the public.
Sure. Tony?
A couple of questions, comments. In your, in your letter you sent with this, you mentioned the edit summary includes addressing more comprehensive design review for town center development, and then also a stronger, excuse me, addressing appropriate densification and scaling, and we talked a little bit about this in a meeting we had. So my question is, what, what new tools does this plan give us for those two areas that we didn't have before?
Yeah, so the tools, and Matt kind of touched on them, is that we get, that really are the benefit, the huge benefit to us. One is the private-public partnership aspect. We can actually now blend in and work with these private property owners on solutions that have, that involve some type of level...
Yeah, but let me stop you there, because personally, I'm not big on the town spending a bunch of money on private businesses and private property. I'm asking, this was in response to the Hampton Inn and some...
Oh, she's talking about the densification part of it? Yeah.
And the design review.
Yeah, so, okay, I apologize.
What's changed in the plan from the 2015 plan to today's plan?
Yeah, so that's one of the things. So one of the critical things that we looked at, and this is one of the conversations we had with the community, and it relates to the Hampton Inn, was this idea that the town was going to come in and build four-story buildings everywhere. And so what we wanted to do, and that's why we took a real careful look at that table that you're looking, that we were looking at, and saying, okay, let's ratchet some of this back. But at the same time, you know, that densification that we were talking about was going to be located at, you know, that town core area. So we were looking at the post office building, you know, people were originally talking about the idea that that has maybe a higher level of density. And so what we wanted to do is put the fear to bed that, you know, we're not in here to build a ton of four-story buildings. This particular site already had, before even before the 2015 plan was created, was already contemplated for a three-to-four story building under the Ed Lewis Plan, and which actually was at a higher density than what's actually showing out there today. So, so the idea that we're going to continue a high level of density throughout is not something that we're, have any interest in, but we wanted to address that, that particular commentary, and so I'm glad you brought that up. And we put the defense, the densification into that staff report for that specific reason. And so, and that was just really directly listening back to the community, listening back to, you know, the, just sitting and listening on the council meetings to commentary from, from the public about what they do like and what they don't like. And then the other side of it is, is when we move forward, one of the key things that came out of that, and what came out of, and we look at next steps, and the first things that we're going to start to address, are going to be zoning and design review. And if there's ways that we can improve upon design review, if there's things we can change within the zoning code that will help abate some of the issues that the community had, which relates to the hotel, that, those are the things that we're going to be interested in doing. And so we can create a more selective approach on how we do that within the redevelopment area and create an overlay district that's more consistent within our zoning. And then we can also look at this, all this through the general plan update as well. So we have a lot of avenues to be able to start focusing, but we, but we, like, we've got this 30,000 square foot look about on this specific area here and what we're trying to accomplish.
And then a comment, it's a small thing, but it's, but we always stumble over the small things, right, not the big things. In the vision statement, Carefree Village Center is the heart of a progressive community. Now, in 2015, progressive meant one thing. In 2023, it means something else. I'm not taking any personal political position on, you can be from far one to far to the other, I don't care about any of that, but is that really the appropriate language in our vision statement for our redevelopment plan? Couldn't we just put something like forward thinking, or just take that off the table so that's not thrown back in our face a million times over the next 10 years?
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's up to the council. You know, like I said, we didn't touch the vision statement.
I like forward thinking.
Yeah. And, and, and Councilmember Geiger, we did discuss this, you know, at length a little bit for, with the P and Z. It was brought up specifically the same thing. They said, hey, why, what's this word progressive in here? And we kind of came to the conclusion that, look, let's not, that's not what the task was, we weren't here to change the vision. Nothing is fundamentally different with the word in there, but I understand your concern.
Candace, can we, if we decide to approve this, can we have a motion to amend that sentence and fix that if we do approve it tonight, so it doesn't have to derail the whole process?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I half expected it. And Councilmember Geiger, one of the comments that you've made in the past was when we have these like big documents that we look to have executive summaries, and so one of the things that we will be putting together as part of the next steps is to execute, put some type of summary together that's easily to, more easily digestible for the community to be able to look at. It'll be part of what we put on our website. The nice thing of, the way, the way to do it though is is make sure that it can be dynamic, because as things do change, you know, we can change that two-page piece, you know, as needed. And so what we will be doing, yeah.
Because this is, this is, I mean, comprehensive and detailed, but most citizens probably won't read it?
Correct.
Or a nice summary would give them the flavor of what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, but most citizens, I don't think even knew we had it, the 2015 plan, and a lot of people have just moved here, so I think it's a good opportunity to educate people with, I think, smaller chunks, and then get them, you know, get them interested in if they want to see the larger plan or ask questions, they have the opportunity.
Are there any other comments about the idea of changing progressive to forward thinking? I think it's a...
I agree, though.
I think it's a nice idea. Any other comments? So I have a couple of questions. In the section about why a redevelopment plan, this was a presentation that Matt presented, so lists four different things there, public, gives us new tools, four new tools. Without the plan, none of those tools are possible? So it talks about access to federal grants, to me is the best one on this list.
Correct.
So that is not possible?
No, so the federal grant funding comes through the city, the CDPG funding, through the federal government, and as well as ADA, and they give lots of preference to redevelopment areas. And so I think we'd have access to those CDPG funds, as well as the ADA funds, to help fix with some of the pedestrian things that we're working on, as well as, you know, you know, we do have a population that does have need as well here, and I think having an opportunity in a place in the town center really can, I think it's very attractive, especially when we start, and matter of fact, I just was looking at some state grants as well, when it relates to health and welfare, and so we start looking at like these pedestrian plannings, plans that we're doing, and even adding in the bicycle elements. There's even some additional grant funding, but they do look for, you know, levels of, are you in this area, are you in this zone, in redevelopment area? You have to have a redevelopment area for the CDPG funds.
Okay, so this checks that box?
Yes.
Create opportunities for federal grants possibly?
Correct. Yep.
So what I heard tonight, and I read, is that we could have like rezoning districts, or zoning districts are, would be possible as a result of this redevelopment plan being approved. And so what, go into that, what would be an example of that?
I don't know, Stacy, if you want to talk more about zoning districts, but, I mean, I think there's lots of ways that we can approach, you know, how we can look at specific zoning or specific zoning categories, or how we can have specific zoning flexibility within the specific area. And so those are the things that we're going to look at and analyze, and it could be, you know, we have an overlay district, I think could be one way to approach that. Or maybe there's ways where we can use special use permits or conditional use permits specific to the town center, or specific types of buildings. So I think those are the things that we just need to explore as we, you know, again, you want to provide flexibility, but then what you don't want to do is threaten the lifestyle that people have outside of that redevelopment area, because it's so solely uniquely different. And then when you have one zoning category, one zoning... And then when you have one zoning category, one zoning code that overlays an entire town, and half that town's got this rural characteristic of trying to hide homes, and you've got these businesses that are trying to be seen, and, you know, it just doesn't, it's almost like you're mixing apples and oranges. And so that's the intent, is to get some more specific opportunity in zoning for this specific unique area.
And that would allow us to have, uh, design guidelines which might have more teeth to them?
We're going to look and see what we can do as far as adding more teeth through the, the design guideline process. And one of the things when we start talking about usually utilizing public funds is we actually get a lot more control over. So let's say somebody comes through a program and we help out and provide some assistance, well, that would then come along with the things that we want, which is going to be a higher level of design, and we have a lot more control over that as well.
Okay. And in fact, your, Councilman Geiger's comments, one about design review and about, uh, density and scaling, I think are right on the mark.
Yeah.
So I.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I read through the plan, and it, that didn't jump off the page at me in terms of densification and scalability.
Yeah.
I mean, they're both important, they're very important.
Yeah, I, our goal is, is to, you know, the one thing that we heard is, is that people like, generally like the scale of the town. They generally like the charm of the town. They like the idea that the town center is, uh, is unique in that it's locally owned businesses. And so those are the things that we really want to maintain, um, you know, and, and then add in this element of mixed use. You know, we do have the townhomes coming in, looking at some other opportunities for people to actually just live here, where they don't have to even own a car. They can just walk to everything they need or bike to whatever they need. And so that's the idea of, of kind of moving forward. So we talk about progress or progressive. I think that was really the idea of moving more towards this idea of a true live, work, and play environment. You know, so somebody wants this living carefree, but they're living by themselves right now, their spouse passed away, and they're in a 3,000-square-foot home, but they still want to stay in their community. They have that opportunity. And so I think that's kind of the idea that, and that's one of the comments I actually read when I was going through the 2015 surveys. That was actually brought up, that people wanted to have that continuity of living.
In prior discussions, we talked about a, like, redevelopment board, or the body that would control this. So I didn't see that in the plan. So what's the thoughts on moving forward, how that would be implemented?
Yeah, so that's, uh, Mayor, um, one of the things that you, as part of the law, you can actually create a separate redevelopment commission. And, um, and typically, communities will create a separate redevelopment commission, one because they're large and they, hey, can have 400 boards, and, and the council's involved in a lot of various different things. But in, in a lot of communities that are smaller, you have a lot of conflict of interests. Wickenburg's a great example, where, you know, I think, like, three-quarters of the council own property in the redevelopment area, and they really can't vote without having declared some kind of conflict of interest. And so it precludes them from doing a lot of things, so parts, and so that's why you would create a redevelopment commission is to kind of provide that third-person, third-party objective viewpoint. One of the things that we're looking at when we move forward is heavily utilizing the planning and zoning commission. Uh, we, you know, we created the, it's, it's kind of a quasi-commission now with the planning and zoning, and we have the Economic Development Advisory Board. And part of that was, is because a lot of the things that we're going to be asking them to do over the next, you know, 36 months, you know, or, or the next 10 years, I guess we'll say, is, is being able to evaluate programs and projects that are really going to be influential to the development of this particular town center, because it's the core, it's what drives, it's kind of the heartbeat of the town. What's what makes us a little bit different than everybody else. And so it's going to be very important to run things through there, just like we ran the plan through. And it's, I think it's important that everything that we do is going to be done in the public, and we'll work through public workshops and allow the public to be engaged in those dialogues and hear the conversations and understand exactly what's going on, you know, before it actually happens, and, uh.
Yeah, I was just going to say, what Mayor Crane was talking about is there's nothing in this plan that specifically spells out density and scalability or, or scale. And, um, that should be in here somewhere. Yes?
Um, I mean, I think more of the density and, we could talk about it within the planning process. Generally, this is plan is going to be in conformance with the general plan.
Right.
So the general plan is going to outline kind of more along the lines of where your densities are. This is more of kind of the vision of how we're going to accomplish a lot of those things. And so that's, you know, so.
Yeah, I would just think that that would be a part of the vision.
There you go.
Yeah, I would, that you wouldn't have three Hampton Inns.
Right. Um, and just to add some color commentary, Steve is correct in that this is a redevelopment plan in the sense of outlining how the town is looking to reimagine, if you will, the village center. But we still have to adhere to the zoning and general plan requirements that the town has today. So, um, what isn't shown on this particular, uh, page is Table 2, uh, within the document actually does outline, um, a, I, um, a understanding of what the intensity and density of the village master, uh, uh, what the village center would convey in association with achieving this redevelopment plan. So when the current general plan identified a certain number of residential dwellings within the village center, we looked at that number and subtracted the existing residential development that's going under, um, that's going under construction now, and, uh, just stating that delta, that change. We did not increase residential because we're being consistent with the general plan. The same goes for the non-residential aspect. We looked at the market study, and the market study said that there's not a, a significant shift in the, uh, commercial, um, square footage that is required in the village center. So you'll see there's not a huge change relative to the overall square footage for non-residential or number of units for residential to be consistent with how the community had approved the, the existing general plan, which sets that foundation, and then the zoning supports that. And so, um, I think from that aspect, that's what that Table 2 is intended to do, is, uh, provide that next level of detail to ensure that this is not suggesting something more intensive than what is already on the books.
So, so let me ask the question another way, because I don't think we've gotten an answer for it, and it's been asked three times. And that is, you talk about addressing more comprehensive design review and addressing appropriate densification and scaling. Is that something that I'm hearing needs to be in the general plan? Because it's not in this plan.
No, the design review, uh, this document can't update that, that docu, those design guidelines have to be updated, um, on their own. And so within this document, we have language to outline what should be considered when looking to update those design guidelines. But this redevelopment plan can't in and of itself get in and change those design guidelines, because they have to be, they have to go through their own process. So what we tried to do in this document is to outline, based on public input, this is what we heard from stakeholders and the public about what should be considered when you're looking at updating those design guidelines. And so then we make a recommendation to update those design guidelines consistent with the recommendations within this plan. So, so we're trying to create kind of bumpers, but unfortunately, the plan itself can't necessarily go out and do all those things.
Right, so I would, I would be, um, of the mind that each of these documents should be able to stand on their own. And this one can't without having the general plan, and it can't without having the, the design guidelines. And so I, I have, I have a document here that's really extensive and it's terrific, but it doesn't stand on its own.
It, I guess it, it is creating, this document is creating the, um, procedures and, uh, conditions to achieve a vision. So the fact that this document as a redevelopment plan, and if you were to see how they're utilized in other communities, some are even more, uh, some are, you know, 10 pages. They have almost nothing in them. Um, and they just meet the bare minimum of state statute. This document, we were trying to provide that additional detail, knowing that we're not necessarily going to go and update the zoning code, because that's an outcome of this plan. So, um, I recognize your preference for this plan to stand on its own, but it's, it's intended and its purpose is to guide the different efforts of all of those, uh, documents, and not necessarily pull them all into one specific plan, because then this would be overly focused, right, on the village center when those plans.
So perhaps there should be, maybe in the executive summary or somewhere, a statement that tells us how we're using all these different documents.
We certainly would.
And how they all work together. And I think that would simplify the whole thing.
We would certainly be happy to do that.
Is there any way you can make reference, though, to the general plan or any other governing documents within this plan?
We, we do outline, uh, the reference to the general plan and the zoning code in that existing conditions, the chapter 2.
Yeah, I saw that, but I mean, going forward on a go-forward basis, you know, how we exist today, how we're going to exist tomorrow?
Um, if I understand your comment, it's to ensure that this plan continues to be consistent with the general plan. Um, that, that is required per state statute, but we can certainly make that statement as part of this, uh, executive summary, if that, um, would meet your expectations.
Yeah, because that, that will link it, link it together.
Happy to do that.
Going back to the, the board, um, so I agree with your comments about planning and zoning being, um, things, proposals would flow through them. And they're a recommending body, so they would recommend. So the town council is a legis, will retain legislative powers to decide all of these things, whether it's setting up a public-private partnership, uh, engaging in, um, financing, applying for a grant. So the council retains all of that.
Correct. At, at, at the current time, uh, as this plan is drafted, uh, it's viewing the council as still the, uh, decision-making body relative to moving forward on any recommendations with this plan.
So by default, there's no, there's no question, no action is needed to appoint us?
Correct.
We are it.
Correct. Yes.
The, um, so this is a question maybe for the staff. On the executives, adding an executive summary to this, how, how would we approach that? And be able to act upon this this evening? Is that something should be added later? Can we approve it and consider it for approval tonight? How do we do?
As far as adding the executive summary, I mean.
That, that Matt was talking about, and the, defining some of the things that, so the council's not, we're not specifically, or very specific, but things that you spoke about.
I mean, there's things we can add, you know, like, I know we're looking at making a, a specific edit to the document related to the verbiage or the term.
Progressive.
Progressive. But as far as adding in connectivity to, you know, back to the various different documents that this is, this touches or works with, you know, we can do that within the, we can do that in an executive summary. Or we can add it, some kind of language to this document here.
Yeah, we're not really changing this plan.
Right.
What we're doing is just making it a little simpler to understand how, how everything is working together.
Correct.
So this document, in, in its entirety, can stand on its own.
I mean, this, so this document stands as it stands today, and we're not changing the, the nature of the way it stands.
Right.
Today, or the way it's always stood for the last seven years. And so, but I understand the idea that, that people may want to understand how this fits into the context of the other documents.
And what I'm saying is that I think we can approve this with that one word change, forward-thinking, as we all are, um, and, and move on.
Correct.
And I don't see that we're changing anything else in this document.
The question is, will we put the executive summary in this?
No, I think, so, so as far, as far as an executive summary, the way I approach, I, I would like to approach this, is because if you take a doc, an executive summary, and you make it part of the document, then it becomes static. If we have an executive summary, and I bring that back to you in the next, you know, two mon, two, you know, 60 days, um, and then we can talk about, you know, show you with that executive summary, I don't know if it's something you guys want to review, I can do a presentation on that, that kind of outlines all of it.
An executive summary would take 60 days?
Well, I was just talking about, thinking about council meetings. I can get it done quicker, but.
I mean, I, I, I just see that it's taking a look at this and summarizing it in two or three pages.
Yeah, I could do it.
All the key elements. I mean, we're not asking you to, to reinvent the wheel, we're not, we're not asking you to change this document.
Sure.
Steve, is this a, is there a time sensitivity to, to all of this? Is this something that, that we can do and then maybe reconvene to, to set a, a special meeting in a week or something to, to get this thing pushed through? Or what, what type of a timeframe are, are we looking at?
Um, I, I don't know if we're on a specific timeframe.
This is long range. I mean, we're looking at this over.
Do you mean as far as getting an approval for the document?
Right.
Not approving this plan does not hold up anything that's going on.
Yeah, the only thing that we'd have to do is, is that, so, and we haven't done this part, part of the, of the, the meeting yet, is that this is actually a public hearing. So what, what I would have to do then is, is I'd have to repost for another public hearing, go through all those motions. So we're probably looking at another, it might, wouldn't, I don't know if we even meet the, for the next council meeting, we might have to be out that next council meeting after that.
Just to, to clarify, uh, we can continue to adate certain, so we won't have that reposting.
Okay.
Uh, so that would be to our February 7th meeting, is that the correct date, Candace? Yes. So, uh, continuance to February 7th.
Well, Steve, for example, if you look at the objectives and the action steps.
Mm-hmm.
There's about 30 steps in there. Um, communications, uh, marketing coordinator, there's just a lot of stuff. If I didn't know anything about it and I sat down and read this, um, this is an excellent document, but there are a lot of people that might be swimming in this detail. So that summary would help people understand the highlights, um, a high-level summary of these action points, et cetera, et cetera. And somebody can get it in two pages.
Yeah, I mean, so the Councilmember Johnson, I guess the question I have is, does a summary need to be created prior to the document being approved? Or can we approve the document and I'll get you a summary and, and I'll have that to you in 30 days?
Well, the question really is, is will someone without that summary be comfortable with this document that has to read it and do something with it?
At this point, I haven't found anybody who's that uncomfortable.
No, I wouldn't expect to pick, pick up architect plans and open them up and be able to read them and understand them on my own.
But at the same time, the, the summary wouldn't change the document, it wouldn't change the, the contents of the document, or, or, you know, it, it just summarizes the document. So we can, in essence, approve this document and, and then have a, a summary created after the fact, I would think.
Correct. I mean, that would be, that would be my recommendation.
I just think it's really important that, in our discussions, the takeaways were, like I've said it a bunch of times, is comprehensive design review and density.
Yeah.
Those are two of the things that we talked about, that you were saying this plan will really help with. So I think you need to connect the dots in your summary as to, that's our objective, the next step to get those tools is.
Right.
Because if that just floats out there, it's just rhetoric on a page. It's, because the document itself does not address that, as we, as explained to us why.
Yeah.
But I think it's the most critical part of this. Certainly not floating bonds and town money to private businesses. That can't be what we're really doing here.
Right. And so, and Councilmember Geiger, um, one of the things that when we look at the next steps is that we have the 24-month economic development plan, and so that is in the, is, I've updated that, and I've already shared that with the Planning and Zoning Commission. But with the seating of a new council and having some new council members, um, we've, I, I'd hoped to get that done in December, but I, it was just too, the timing just wasn't right. And so, but that document will be utilized to take this list of to-dos. And that was one of the things that I struggled with when I very first read the document for the first time, was this is a lot of to-dos, you know, who's implementing what? And it was kind of hard to find accountability. And so part of what we did is we look at that economic development plan, and we'll be able to sit down, go through both Planning and Zoning Commission and Council and set those priorities with, inside that 24-month plan for the things that we are going to be tackling specifically that are in this revitalization plan.
So are you suggesting then that the 24-month economic development plan would. So are you suggesting then that the 24-month economic development plan would include steps to improve the comprehensive design review?
Absolutely, absolutely. Mm-hmm, and matter of fact, in the draft, current draft, those are outlined as key things. So the key things we're redressing are looking at the design review. Where we're looking at zoning and in those types, zoning would be specific to that. And then we'll be looking at any kind of programs that we'd want to be offering and then we'll be looking at the town hall. Those are the four key things that we're going to be examining. And we're not starting from like, I'm going to bring you back, like approve this tomorrow. We're, we're truly going to be running those things through a process that's going to engage the stakeholders.
Three, four pages, four days before a meeting on a holiday?
So.
And so that also include, will address the density, densification, the words that are written in that cover letter here today?
Yeah, those, we'll start, we'll start working on that densification conversation. And I mean, I think what, what Matt wanted to hit upon is, was that, and Gary and I have talked about this, the plan never really was a heavily densification plan to begin with when you look at the total numbers. And so what we did was we just kind of looked at how do we refine that and, and, and put it to rest that it never really was meant to be this, you know, really, you know, downtown, you know, Scottsdale kind of feel. It was really meant to be, you know, we had a catalyst project, we completed the catalyst project here and we're moving on. But we're really going to be focusing on really what the bread and butter is and that's the, you know, the pedestrian charm.
Because Councilman Geiger is 100% right. So densification, scalability and design review, to me, they're, they're really key parts of the discussion. And I think the public, when we went through the public here, the public hearings, workshops we'll call them, I think that's issues that were front and center with them and certain things, certainly things they understood and, and were concerned about.
Absolutely, and I think that's, that's what we heard loud and clear through the entire process, through almost all the stakeholders that we've talked to for those specific issues. And so those are the things that we're, we're going to put into the, to the forefront. And I'll be working closely with, with Stacy as well, planning, she left, she had enough of me.
Couldn't take it anymore.
She's like, yeah. And so, well, we're, we're, and I've been working closely with Stacy on a lot of these issues, you know, because these things are planning issues, but they're also economic development and they cross. And, and we'll be working together on being able to do what it is we can to, to, to get to a better place. I mean, that's really, and that's what this plan's about. It's just about figuring out ways we can get to a better place and we're going to do those things incrementally. And we're going to do them wide, eyes wide open with, with everybody, you know, all the stakeholders that are involved.
Any other questions from council?
Good job, Steve.
Thanks, thank you. Okay.
And there is a public hearing.
Correct, so when is the appropriate time to ask for comments from the public?
Just one, actually, there's one more thing that, that we didn't mention is that this vote does require a two-thirds majority. Yep.
Correct.
Should we open the hearing, ask for public input, close the hearing, do your part?
Okay, so now we'll open the hearing and public input is welcome. Okay, hearing none, the hearing portion is closed. And I would ask for a motion from the council, including revision of the wording from progressive to forward-looking.
Thank you.
Thinking.
Forward-thinking.
I'll make such a motion, so moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, please do a roll, this is a two-thirds vote, so let's do a roll call.
Uh, Councilmember Geiger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Iamaroso, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Delicio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatcher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Croyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Steve and Matt, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt.
Item number nine, approval of an application for Series 14 Club Liquor License for Desert Forests Golf Club, Scott Edwards Simoniak as general manager located at 37207 North Mule Train Road, Carefree, Arizona 85377. The applicant here would like to, welcome to come up.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm just new to the town, I'm the new general manager at Desert Forests Golf Club and just positioning to have our, the old general manager's name, that was on liquor license removed and mine put on.
Okay, oh.
That's easy.
I think we can handle that.
Good.
Wait a minute.
Mayor and council, when, in, in a club liquor license, the general manager is the person responsible. So whenever there's a change in staff, that's a general manager, then they're required to make that application and they have to go through the same background check, so.
Any comments, questions from council?
I actually have a question, I'm, and this is more for Candace. Now, I know that, that you have discretionary power on, on a lot of these, but for a simple change of name, this gentleman had to come before the council?
Excuse me.
After you, after you die, you can answer the question.
Timing is everything. It does, because it has to go to the liquor department. It's not a simple change. He had to go through a whole application process with the liquor department. Liquor department requires the council to bless that change, so, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? So we entertain a motion for the approval of an application for Series 14 Club Liquor License for Desert Forests Golf Club.
Uh, motion to approve application for Series 14 Club Liquor License for Desert Forests Golf Club, Scott Edward Simoniak as general manager in Carefree.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, it passes unanimously, okay, thank you. Item number 10, adjournments, have a motion to adjourn?
I would make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, very good, okay, thank you, thank you all for sticking it out.